Okay, are you good?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Independence Board of Education, June 5th, regular meeting. We just came out of executive session, so we are not going to call roll. Is that okay, Ms. Knapp?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I have my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hopefully, everybody got in here before it started to pour. Alright. Our meeting statement, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Do we have any updates from Mrs. O'Neal?
No, because we switched our board meeting from the regular to the special. She had it on her calendar to attend the second meeting in June, which we moved to a work session. Well, not actually a work session, but a special meeting.
Right.
So, I texted her, I let her know. I'm gonna make sure that Di includes her on our updates when we change meetings.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Knapp?
I have plenty to update, so I'll take Mrs. O'Neal's time forever.
Lovely.
So, a couple of things that is happening in the finance world. One, we've done a lot to try to communicate with parents, but EZ Pay has been acquired by Pay Schools, and now it's gonna be called Pay Schools Central. And I have experience with Pay School Centrals, that's what we used in our previous district. It is really user-friendly. All parents, when they log in, they'll be connected into another link to set up a new account, and there, once they set up that account, all money that they have on their current student's account will transfer over with no loss of funds or anything of that nature. And it shuts down tomorrow at, tomorrow at 4:00 PM. And then, the new one will start July 1st. That gives us time for any reconciling items to transfer through. So, it's pretty exciting, because I know there's been some, this year, there's been some unpleasantries with EZ Pay not communicating and doing everything we wanted to do. So, it might have been part of the acquisition going on, I don't know. But, pretty exciting stuff that that will be switching, and we did try to make sure parents are aware of it. On the agenda tonight, you'll have two things to be aware of under my section. The adoption of the state teacher's retirement system of Ohio and the STRS of Ohio, which is school employer system. So, I was notified this week, actually, from STRS that we were, our documentation in place is outdated and needs updated. So, this is a formality of just getting a new resolution in place to send down to Columbus to those two entities. It's not changing anything we're doing, it's just simply, I think the first one for STRS was 1995, and the last time it was renewed was 2005. So, it's been 20 years in time to do that. So, that's what that is for. And then, under Board Business, we have the resolution supporting the Fair School Funding Plan. I'm sure some of you are aware that, I think it was Tuesday, the 3rd, the Senate released their version of their biennium bill, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that in a second, but there's so much coming out of Columbus, it's hard to keep track of it. But, one of the things that, all the associations, OASBO, OSBA, which is for Board Members Association, the Superintendent Association of Ohio, School Business, which is where Treasurers and Business Managers, the other associations are asking for support to support Fair School Funding to try to make sure that we protect any dollars that are coming to public education. So, tonight, we do have on there just a resolution to support that and a copy that goes down to Columbus, just to show our unity with all the other districts, and many, many, many are doing them across Ohio. Many of them have been done, and so, we might even be a little late to coming to the table to do that, but it's important to show it coming out of there. Then, when we look at what's happening down in Columbus, the Senate's version, a couple of things that are very concerning to schools and other entities too, but there's a proposal to have a flat income tax of 2.5%. So, that does impact overall what will happen with homestead exemptions to us. So, we wanna see what that will do. Most importantly is they have in that provision to eliminate the ability to authorize an emergency levy and a substitute levy. So, if we no longer can levy an emergency or substitute levy, the only other option we have is to go as a continuing, so it would force us to be on the ballot pretty early. The renewal, the earliest we could have renewed the emergency levy that we spoke about, which brings in 4.2 million, would have been November of '26. So, and it's effective as written for January 1st, 2026. So, it'll be interesting to see how that writing actually comes out and if it sticks in there. So, we really wanna watch that carefully, because it may be putting us on the ballot much, much sooner than I've ever spoke about or thought about because of a change coming out of there. I really didn't see that one coming, so. And they're doing that as a type of property tax reform, which is one of their overall missions for this biennium, but that would impact a lot of schools across Ohio. So, and they also want the emergency levy to count towards the 20 mil floor right now for tax year '25. So, that would impact us also, because one of the reasons districts get to him is they're excluded at the 20 mil floor currently as language right. So, the bright spot is they took the 30% carryover, bounced to 50, and allows some provisions for capital planning purposes, which we've already been discussing. So, that was a bright spot coming out of there, but we really need to keep our eye on it. I believe testimony for the Senate ends tomorrow, and a lot of treasurer, superintendents, and different school officials have been down in Columbus lobbying and testifying. So, we'll see where this all comes, but I just wanna keep everyone updated as to the activity in Columbus. It's a flurry. And additionally, not connected at all with the biennium, but one of the House bills that went out yesterday was that you would, I'm sorry, I have to remember, because there are so many going on. That one might have been where the levy is contained, that you cannot do emergency levies. But, so, there's so many things, I have them all written down, I might find it in my part, but I just wanna make sure everyone's aware, so many things coming out.
Thank you for that explanation, because I think sometimes people think that it's a decision that we make as a board, and it's really just our hands are tied that we've got to follow the laws of the state. So, thank you for that explanation, John.
Yeah, it's changing, I mean, it's a lot going on. And I'm gonna look up what I got yesterday, because I wanna make sure I bring that up too. It's just escaping me, I'm sorry.
People are upset, they have to look and pay attention to who they're voting for, because that's really, I know somebody that did testify in this last week, and it was very obvious who was, that several of the members are actually at anti-public schools.
Yeah, so, we'll keep our eyes and ears open.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mrs. Kogan?
So, I'm gonna give most of my time over to Ms. Knapp, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Kane to join us at the table, so we can hear her when she's speaking, as they talk about transportation. But, prior to that, I do wanna let the board know that I'm hoping that by the end of June, we can talk a little bit about putting out a request for proposals for an architecture firm to come and, you know, do some proposals and come to bid for our project. So, I think it's important that we get a firm, and then we do the due diligence of bringing in community members, getting some feedback from them. We talked also about a community survey, so I'd also like to look at that. Those are usually two different RFPs, so, you know, or two different companies, I should say, you don't have to do an RFP for them. So, I'm hoping at the June meeting, I can share some information and move forward with that. Sorry, Mr. Reale, I feel like I'm sitting with my back to you.
And real quick, before it goes to the busing, I knew, I knew I'd find it. The House bill yesterday was the elimination of inside millage. So, that's 6.3 mils for us. Unfortunately, today was a little bit busy, and I didn't calculate that for tonight's meeting, so I apologize in front, but I certainly can get that for us. So, if they eliminate inside millage, that would also then have to go to the voters to continue the same funding level to districts. So, a lot of things, a lot of things. Okay, so, for busing, Fran and I, we have been working together to discuss what our staffing levels are, what transportation services we currently offer, have offered, can continue to offer. And as everybody's aware, there's a shortage of drivers in every district everywhere, and we see the campaigning everywhere for buses parked and asking, pleading and begging for people to take interest in becoming bus drivers, and we've not been immune to that at all. And with mixed emotions, this week, we said goodbye to one of our full-time drivers to retirement, so we're excited for her and sad for us, because she gets to go on to a wonderful adventure, and we're trying to figure out our daily adventure at 6:00 AM through 4:00 PM. So, we're getting, we're also having a shortage of drivers from some employments that are retirements that happened this year. We also have two more individuals who are very much on the fence about retiring and likely will retire in some fashion. And when I say that, one thing that many people don't know or realize is that we blend a lot of hours and people together to get our routes to go. So, back, I don't know how many years, and Fran can speak to it, you used to have the same driver in the morning as you did in the afternoon, and that was their route, and it worked really well. And as time has evolved, we're kinda piecemealing, right? Like, we have, this person can do mornings, and this person can do afternoons, but they can't do the full route combined. So, that becomes harder and harder to get consistency in the routes. We've been using our custodial staff as drivers, I think, every day, but Fran can correct me. Or just about. And we also have pulled our maintenance staff to do routes, and parents have felt pain with having, at times when all of that's not working, doing double-up routing. So, we've really worked as hard as we could. And please know that we've done a lot of efforts to recruit drivers for this year specifically we have. We did bus at the community events, we did the really cool T-shirt and a sign, and all the drivers were at the one Friday night football game, and it was kind of exciting. And then, at the business expo, I sat in the bus, which was super cool. I'd encourage everybody when the bus is out there, it brings a whole new perspective to what we ask of these drivers. Fran told me I wouldn't make it as a driver, by the way, so I'll just take that and accept it. We've looked at social media, we've engaged the efforts of a recruiter too, and we've had some success with that. A couple people came in, they started training and found out it wasn't for them, which is totally acceptable. And we have one that should be ready to go in the fall, if all goes well, but there's a lot of variability to that still. So, the time, it's super time-intensive to train a driver. It's two to three months, it's on the road, it's in-classwork, it's getting CDLs, and our onboard instructors spend a lot of time with them, and the understanding that you have to be on time, and everything about transportation is time-driven and by a clock, and everything operates to that. So, with this staffing issue, we're trying to figure out, how do we bring consistency to families for the fall? And how do we continue to provide transportation at a level our community and parents expect? And it's been a struggle, very honestly. So, one of the things that we're looking at doing is, how do we cover the routes? And I would ask Fran to speak to maybe how many routes we have, how many are not covered.
So, this year, we had nine routes. There were two out-of-district and seven in-district. We had 11 drivers. Five of them were part-time, so could only do a morning or an afternoon, and the other one, the maintenance, our maintenance guy, drove every afternoon. Our custodians were driving every week, and I was driving every afternoon. And so, those part-time drivers, only one's coming back. So, right now, I have six contracted drivers and one's on the fence. So, we might only have five drivers next year, which is huge, a huge problem.
So, with this in mind, and there are more avenues for us to continue to look at. Please know, this is not the only thing we're looking at, but one of our recommendations is to look at discontinuation of the high school busing for grades 9 through 12. And that, why that is, and why did we come up with that as the start of this, is it will allow us to bring that driver into in-district routes to help cover our current routing. So, we're trying to find ways to continue to provide busing services.
If we don't bus our students, we don't bus out-of-district high school students. So, it would save us one whole route, at least.
And number-wise for our high school, how many students would that affect?
There's, according to the report we did in the fall, we had 53 high school students that ride.
That ride.
They don't ride consistently, they don't ride, you know, a lot of them are in sports, so they're not on the bus every day, but 53 of them, that's what we reported.
Some could be siblings, they could be siblings.
Exactly.
It's really one stop. But, that was my next question, is how often do we check? Like, the families that sign up at the beginning of the year that stay riding?
They, if they don't ride, the driver, if they don't ride for a couple weeks, the drivers come in and tell me, and then I make a call to them, and I just say, "We're taking you off the route for now, if you need it later, you know, give us a call and let us know." Because we do have them, I think, in case of emergency, they sign up, but we don't, we, drivers know that within a couple weeks, if no one's riding, to let me know.
Kelly, off the top of your head, what was our student population in high school?
Oh, 80 times, 300 and...
350?
350, probably between 320, 350.
So, 50 out of 350 you're using, so that's 1/5, 1/7, 1/5?
Sure.
It's not a lot, it's a small percentage.
Yeah, did the 53, that just was our Independence High School students?
That's just our Independence.
And then, what is the number for parochial or outside?
So, that, so, the number, there's like 32 St. Ignatius students, they don't all ride, same thing, you know? And then, Padua, I don't, I didn't get their roster yet, but last year, only two rode. And holy name, nobody rode last year. So, they didn't need it.
When you say two out-of-district, do you mean one in the morning, one in the afternoon? So, that's two?
No.
Or do you mean two in the morning and two in the afternoon?
Two in the morning, two in the afternoon, because the other bus takes are K through eight out-of-district students. St. Albert, St. Comkell, Incarnate Word.
Gotcha, okay.
Those kids, we will continue to bus, because we're gonna be busing K to 8.
That's, yeah, that's how it would be.
The elementary parochial and private will still be served.
A couple of the things that we've been, that we were just starting to investigate, though, or research, is there's walk distances, that maybe there's some areas that if you're, you know, within a half-mile, and I don't, we have to, we have to look at that, though, right? What does the map look like? Certainly, we don't want kids crossing 21 to come to the middle school kind of thing. So, that is just an option that we just learned of today, and a couple of other ones. So, perhaps over the summer months, we might be able to bring even more thoughts and suggestions of improvements to, if we can't get. The ultimate hope is that over the summer months, we get more people to pass the tests, get through and become drivers, right? That is our ultimate goal here, but in the event that that doesn't work, we just don't want parents to not have any information or idea what we're facing as a district, so.
And I will say that Mr. Young, Matt Young, the superintendent of Cuyahoga Heights, we're gonna meet to discuss some opportunities, maybe, with our elementary busing. Like, if they're busing their private, is that something that we could maybe, you know, go up, like, double up on that particular situation, CVCC? I'm also gonna reach out to Parma. It might be a situation where some students who live, I'm sorry, not Parma, Brexville, might be that some students who live towards Brexville could maybe get on the Brexville bus for their private run. Students who live on the other side could get on the Cuyahoga Heights bus run. So, we are gonna explore some of those options over the summer to see if that could alleviate that, a full route for us out-of-district. Because, I mean, basically, if we have nine now, and we take one away for the high school busing, we're at eight, and we have six contracted employees. So, we're still two in the hole. You know, depending on whether or not we can fill those two positions, you know, and then again, if you don't, then you're looking at taking, you know, our mechanic, not our mechanic, I'm sorry, our maintenance.
Maintenance guy away every day.
Joe, and taking him and pulling him from his job, so he's driving buses, and then also our custodians, which, you know, can be a problem.
And if we decide to go eliminate the high school busing, can we bring it back at some point if we recoup the numbers?
We could always go back, you know, we could always add.
We can always improve services.
Yes, yeah.
And I know there's been conversations, I mean, districts have done it, Nordonia is currently doing it, where they have outsourced all of their busing to, I don't know if it's Peterson or one of them. That's also an option. Usually, you have to start thinking about that two years out to get on their waitlist. But, you know, it's, this is not an independence issue, you're seeing this everywhere. We're just trying to be, you know, think kind of creatively, but also at the same time recognizing, we need to give parents enough notice to let them know. We're actually bound by law to tell parents prior to a certain date whether or not we'll be busing their students. So, that's why we're having this conversation tonight.
Does Nordonia also do their extracurriculars as well?
I don't know, I can ask them.
So, besides this meeting, are we sending communication to all families, just bus-riding families? How is that gonna be after tonight?
Yeah.
So, they get enough notice?
There's, I mean, our understanding is we're gonna put forth a resolution to say that we're no longer going to be busing high school students. We would get that communication out tomorrow.
Okay.
And we would explain a lot of the data points.
Okay.
We'll bullet point it, so people read it.
So, as far as the resolution specifically is concerned, this attachment, do we have to give a reason legally why we're discontinuing the service? I mean, there's only two reasons, or we just say we're just not providing it?
No, you can just, you don't have to provide the reason for that.
There's no why.
Because I noticed there was a reason in here, but I didn't know if that was...
We just wanted to be forward and transparent. We don't have drivers, so right now, this is not something we can do, because we need to get...
Yeah, and in our communication, like, please make it clear that it's because we don't have people.
Oh, gosh, yes.
You know, it's not because we don't wanna provide it to people outside, like, I want people to choose where they go to school, but, you know, it's truly because we don't have the drivers.
And we'll share with families, you know, if they say, like, "Well, why are you making the decision now when you're gonna try to actively recruit or think creatively over the summer?" And it's because we are bound by a date requirement. Now, if over the summer, we do end up getting three or four bus drivers, right? Or something creative happens, and I'm like, "Oh, we don't have to do that out-of-district run, because we've figured that out," then we would absolutely communicate with families and let them know that we figured it out, and now you have busing.
And there, some companies are even coming up with a business plan to provide drivers to districts and let them, you know, so, I mean, there's lots of things, it's just, we just need to find the right mixture for us.
Yeah.
What works for us.
Yeah, and like, Francine, I just wanna take a second and like, thank you, like, publicly, like, I know, like, we talk about it as a board, but like, I see you when I'm picking up my kids, like, being on that bus, and I know, like, you've had a full day, and like, also our custodians too, like, I mean, that's, I'm not really in their job description to like, drive a bus full of kids, like, every day, and it also stinks for our buildings, our principals, like, our staff, like, to not have their custodians.
Right.
You know, and unfortunately, I get calls from people saying that they don't like how our landscaping looks, and it's because they're driving our children.
Exactly.
You know, so, unfortunately, it's like a domino effect, I don't think everybody sees it, but thank you for driving.
You're welcome, thank you.
Appreciate you, yeah.
And Katie, to your point as well, I know in our cabinet meeting on Monday, we did discuss with Francine, you know, she's the only one who knows how to do her job.
Yeah, yeah, that's so true.
And so, you know, if she has to take time, I mean, she's taken vacation days before, and then there's no drivers, and so, she has to come back, you know, and so, that makes for a very stressful work-life and very limited work-life balance. So, you know, we're also thinking about, you know, she was brought up from the ranks back in the day, right, as a bus driver, then to the transportation director, so we need to also start thinking about who's taking that role over, because if you can promote and train someone internally, that works best. So, we are thinking about that as well. Not that she's leaving anytime soon, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
No, I'm not asking you, I mean, I get these tables to be trained, no. I'm just saying, if she decides, or even just wants to take a vacation, like, she puts in for vacation, and I hold my breath the entire, like, five days.
Please make every day go.
Any questions for us, though, that we didn't discuss or anything of, I mean, it's obviously of concern in general, but is there any other specific things we can either get data for you or answer this evening while Fran's here?
Other than the going private, I would just like, obviously, we have a neighbor doing it, so just to see what, how long they've been doing it, do they like it, not like it?
So, actually, the funny thing is, it's their business director, who happens to be Steve Marlowe. So, I reached out to Steve, so we're gonna do a conference call next week, and he's gonna give me some information on that.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing all that.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for joining us at the table, Francine.
You can stay if you want.
You could stay, you're welcome. Okay, we're moving into public participation. It's the policy of the Independence Board of Education to hear public comment at board meetings. The public is invited to speak to any of the agenda items and other school topics at this time. Comments should be limited to three minutes. If anybody wants to speak, I have a microphone here, so I can come to you. No? Okay, moving on from that. And we'll move on to approval of our minutes from May 6, special meeting, May 9, also a special meeting, and May 20, our regular board meeting. Do we need a promotion?
No, it's in consent.
Okay, sorry, guys.
It's okay. But it is my turn again.
It's your turn again.
I know, two months in a row, you guys get to hear a lot from me, so this is wonderful. The Treasurers report, the finances are very straightforward, as you know. Sorry, this, I want to put that on the table, so I didn't write. Very straightforward, but we close Monday, and they're here, so I forgot to send out my narrative, so I'll do that today too, this evening, so I apologize for that. Then, we talk about the adoption of the school employee retirement and the state teachers' one, which is a compliance issue. And then, that is it for me. And just a reminder, Thursday, June 26, at 8:30, we'll be going over our final approps and our beginning approps for next year.
Thank you. And superintendent recommendations for...
Is there any questions on there for I? I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah.
So, can I move to personnel? So, if you click on Certified Personnel, you'll see quite a lot of movement in there. So, as I told the staff at our, you know, kind of closing day yesterday, there's just been, you know, a lot of changes, and I know sometimes change can be hard, but I think, you know, it can also be good. And so, I'm excited about having a fairly large incoming group of new teachers, administrators into our district, so really excited about that. Any questions on anyone on the list, or are we good? You'll see Brooke Grader's on there twice, and for her extended days, it was to give her some, two additional days in June to work with the new IPS principal, and then an additional two in August. They get, she gets three for the year, so we wanted to give her a couple, so she could work with Jody Hughes. And then, Caroline Quinn is the new hire at the high school, and Mike has asked for her to have some transition days, so she can come now in June and work with Kyle and Connie before they go home on some of the closeout stuff and communication for next year. And then, Personnel Classified, again, pretty straightforward. There's some amendments on there, nothing major, we just forgot to put the levels. Supplemental Contracts, you will see here, we have the, actually, you know what, I'm gonna go back to, sorry.
They're pulled out.
They're pulled out.
They're pulled out.
Oh, thank you. I'm like, where are the supplemental contracts? Okay, let me, we'll go through this other, well, for us tonight, the supplemental makes sense to also do with my other personnel. So, if you wanna go down a little bit to item L, we pulled out supplementals because, Carrie will abstain because of somebody that is a relation when voting. But you'll notice on the supplemental contracts, this looks a little bit different than it did last year, and it's because we've decided to not approve all supplementals for the year here in June. You will see just the fall supplementals on there, those are the ones we've secured. And then, you'll see, probably around August, you'll see then the winter, and then in the winter, you'll see the spring. It allows us to control more when somebody says they wanna do something now, and we've board-approved it, and then they end up not doing it in the winter, and they give it to somebody else, then we have to rescind, we then have to put it back on the board for who's gonna take it. So, it just gets really messy, so we've decided to kind of clean it up a little bit. But I did wanna say...
Boys' basketball is winter, though.
No, I know, but we added it on, because...
Just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that.
So, you'll see boys' basketball on here, and the reason it's added, although not a fall sport, is because we just hired our varsity boys' basketball coach, which is Matt Grundall, and Matt happens to be in the audience tonight. So, really excited to have... in the audience tonight, um, so really excited to have him here. Um, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about Matt, but I'm going to jump right up into the other personnel because Matt is not only going to be our, um, varsity boys' basketball coach, he is also going to be our dean of students for our five through twelfth grade, so he'll be working closely with Mr. Janitovich and, um, as well as, um, Ms. Hughes, I'm sorry.
Ms. Mueller.
Ms. Mueller, the middle school principal, the new middle school principal. So really excited to have Matt here in that capacity, Matt comes to us from Riverside, uh, since 2013, he's been there, uh, working as an intervention specialist, so a teacher there in the district, he has his administrative certificate as well as his intervention specialist license, um, you know, he's been their basketball co, coach. I think something to note is he set the school record for the most wins during a season in twenty-two and twenty-three with, you know, twenty-one wins, um, and I think probably, he also played, uh, college basketball at Lake Erie College and I think probably even more exciting than that is he is, and I, I have two thousand and eight, two thousand and eight graduate of Independence High School, um, so full circle for Matt to come back and work here. Um, I think he's set some records here in Independence as well, so, um, a lot for our boys to be excited about and our, um, community to be excited about, um, I happen to be watching the Twitter feed and the Facebook feed and the comments in there, um, so really excited to have Matt here. Uh, Matt is with his wife, he's got his two little, little boys here, one of them is starting, um, our preschool program in the, in the fall, so as the wife of a coach, I recognize how distance is amazing, right? When you can just pop up and you're not like, where are you? Um, so, um, I'm happy and excited for you, um, it's our win, uh, so thank you for, you know, putting your name out there and, um, and accepting the position, so really excited about that and his family's here with him, mom and dad, um, and his dad, if Dave shared with me, he was on the school board, so, um, yeah, so just really a, a full circle moment, so.
I did, I forgot about that.
How many years, how many years were you on the school board?
Nine years.
Nine years?
I made the nine, served for joint acts last year.
Oh.
Which was the reason I was retired from teaching.
Oh.
It was remaining three to, to ninety-one and also ninety-three.
Oh.
I was able, had the privilege of, my first year for Chan Scogge was last year.
Oh, yeah. I was in school then, so that's a little...
Was I?
Don't tell anything about me.
Uh, but yeah, so Matt, really excited, so Matt, yeah, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Say anything?
Well, yeah, yeah, I'm really excited to be back here, uh, we already started things this week, we're looking forward to trying to build a program that the community can be proud of.
Thank you, Matt.
We have no doubt, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're excited, thanks for coming, Heather.
Thanks, man.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, I congratulate.
Almost, yeah. Yeah, almost, almost fair.
I'm sure you'll be fine.
Um, do you want me to jump back to number four?
Is there any other questions on the, um, personnel J, personnel K, or sorry, personnel J, um, anything else?
I can speak to it.
Okay?
No. Um, I am sorry, can we, we're going to jump back to four in section I really fast before we approve the consent agenda, just for the transportation recommendation.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you for pointing that out, cause it was under the superintendent's, I'm going to have Jen speak to that a little bit, no, it's fine, it's fine.
I'm sorry, so the declaration of impractical to transport for the current school year, and I say current because in my world, we're still in this school year of twenty-four, twenty-five, um, so these are the students uh, that we will be issuing in lieu of payments to, so these, um, are the, and I forget how many exactly, I think there was seven students, eight, okay? So what this is, is just declaring them impractical to transport so that we can issue their payment to them for them applying for, um, payment in lieu of instead of transporting, ouch, my vocal just fell, yes, so, um, and just so you know, in the fall, we're going to be seeing this coming back again because, uh, once they apply for it, then we should be approving it, so we realize that, um, how we're doing it is not incorrect, it's just we could do it better, so we're going to look at improving that process for next year, so you're going to see it kind of quickly and you're going to think, didn't we just do that? And it's going to be for the upcoming school year that we will be in at that time.
I mean, I'm going to, I know I didn't talk about the fee structure, you're, you're like, I thought we approved the fee structure last, last board meeting, we didn't, this is just some clarification on some other pieces that were still out there, um, so we wanted to make sure those are in. Uh, Charlene has worked on a communication that will go out to families, um, so we're just confirming that, making sure everything's right before we send that out, sharing with them that the new fees will be on the, um, final forms for when they start registering in July, uh, so just letting you know that. And then also too, I think I shared with a couple of you, Charlene, um, has created, I asked her to kind of create a survey, um, and we talked about, like, just getting some feedback from our residents about our communication this year, so a communication survey went out, I believe either today or yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yeah, to all the families, so, um, I will, once that data comes back in from those who participate, um, you know, I'll share that data with you just to see what the suggestions were or how people felt about our communication this year.
Thank you.
Now I'm good.
Okay. All right, and go to section K?
Yes, please.
Yes, very good. Um, we'll approve consent agenda from items G one through J four, as presented, including any amendments that are presented. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Carrie and then Tony. Roll please.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Let her out. And then jumping down to L, supplemental contracts. Um, I have a motion to approve the supplementals.
Second.
Lynn and Tony, roll please.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky? Mrs. Sears?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have our third grade, oh, this is the reduction.
In new, in the new business, uh, one of the policies in our, as you all know, we're doing a policy audit and every um, month, we're bringing first and second reads as we continue to go through, uh, some of our policies we found to be pretty outdated, so, um, this, this, uh, forty-one thirty-one is one that is in the HR section, so, um, this has just been outdated, the last time it was updated was prior to the law changing, so this is updating to be in compliance with current law.
Okay, and there's no action on that?
Nope, it's first reading.
Very good.
Along with the third grade reading guarantee.
Very good. Um, upcoming events, Thursday, June twenty-sixth, we have our finance meeting, um, at the board office at eight-thirty AM and then our regular board meeting Tuesday, July fifteenth at six PM here at the High School Media Center. And we will do the, um, approval for board resolution in support of the Fair School Funding Plan.
Are we going to talk about, um, meeting in executive session now about that twenty-sixth meeting? Do we have to talk, talk about that?
Oh, that the time's going to change, we'll, we'll change that time on, yes, so you can meet in executive session prior to that twenty-sixth.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, Jen will send that out.
Eight-thirty or nine or whatever's best for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, once you guys let me know.
Okay.
There'll be an adj, essentially, there'll be an adjustment to time to the June twenty-sixth riveting financial meeting. Riveting.
And because we're still hiring a lot, there may be me sending out a text saying like, hey, can I get three of you at least to come to, um, approve contracts?
Okay, very good.
So, right.
Um, can we have a motion, please, for the, um, Fair School Funding Plan?
So move.
Tony and Lynn, roll please.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky? Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Um, do any of the board members have any comments on anything?
Just congratulations to all the graduates, um, it looked like this year, there was a lot, a lot more graduates that were going straight to work program, which is great, um, and it's, it's just funny sometimes how year after year, graduates seem to, uh, gear towards a certain career as opposed to the previous year. So I just...
Yep.
Thought it was, a lot of, a lot of kids, again, are going towards the, uh, biology pre-med programs, which is for a school our size, I think is, is awesome, uh, so good luck to all them and we'll see how they do.
There are a tremendous amount of compliments on the video.
Yeah, the video was awesome.
The video, so I don't, I know next year's not a milestone year, but I don't know if there's a some way or shape or form, you can incorporate another video, um, but I don't know who's brainchild I was.
Yeah, it was actually, it was Ella, it was Ella's and, um, and Joe's.
Oh, wow.
It was good, awesome.
Yeah, it was very good.
Yeah, it was professional.
Mr. McGuinness doing it.
I know, I told him, I'm like, you have a really good, um, radio voice.
Morgan Freeman, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I do need to work with Charlene, cause we do want to put that out, I know it's in the graduation thing, but we'd like to have the, the link out so other people could see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the community would really love it, like council, I think everybody would really love it.
I, I do want to say just real quick, I want to thank Kelly, like, the changes that you brought this year, um, I was able to stop by, the teacher honorary, two years of service and retirement recognition, and they showed the video to the teachers that weren't able to make graduation, I wasn't actually able to make it myself, so I got to see it, um, I just, it was a great, great vibe, great energy, I just want to thank you, I think the teachers really appreciated the coffee and the donuts and just the time together to kind of wrap up the school year, so I just want to say thank you for all those new changes and exciting way to end, end the school year, so.
I did get a really nice email from Mark Corpus and he did say, he's like, and I think he's been here twenty-six years, he's like, in twenty-six years, we've never been together on the last day.
Yeah.
And he's like, and so it kind of was like, you just kind of went your own way, he's like, it was great to be together and celebrate a successful school year and honor those people, so, yeah, it was a good thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Um, we do need to just go back to O, section two, for discontinuation of the high school busing, um, for approval, the attached resolution discontinuing high school busing services, so we need a motion for that.
So move.
Ron first. Lynn second.
And again, it can be added back, it just can't be taken away, so just wanted to make sure we highlight that.
And call roll please.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
Um, section P, executive session, um, motion to approve to enter an executive session for the purpose of employment, we will be going through the evaluation for Mrs. Cogan after this, um, so there is no further action after our executive session, so if I could have a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Carrie and Ron, enroll please.
Mr. Avila?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasky?
Yes.
Mrs. Sears?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Yes.
And you're inviting?
Um, we are inviting Kelly Cogan in, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and family.
Thank you.
Congratulations.